I'll call this meeting of the Committee of the Whole to order. Committee Chair Lewis has asked me to chair the meeting since he's going to have to be leaving a little early this evening, but he will be here for the first part of the meeting and we're hoping we'll see Counselor Lewis here shortly. Uh, excuse me, Counselor Harris shortly, and I think Counselors Cook and Jones are not able to be here tonight. But I want to thank the university for inviting us to come down here about, I guess it was last fall, the dean and I spoke and we were just kind of brainstorming about how we could engage ourselves, engage a little bit more between the city and the School of Architecture and Planning and maybe to address issues of mutual concern, but also our relations between, between the university and, and the city. So, thank everybody for their, their attendance here today. We have three agenda items that, that we're going to address and I'll just give you a brief introduction of what those are. And this, these ideas were developed by the faculty with some consultation with the city. The Albuquerque image and brand, who are we? What are we offering and who do we want to attract? The second category is growth and development. How can land use, resource management, transportation, housing, business development, business development and policy support our brand and expand our goals? And then last, the town gown relationships, how can we work together better? So, those are the, those are our three agenda items. As far as format, we're going to have a presentation on each of those, a five-minute presentation from a member of the faculty on each of those topics, then followed by public comments. So if you'd like to speak, you can sign up and, and address the council and then followed by each of those, those public comments, we'll have a council discussion about how, how we see these questions. So I think it's, it's a great opportunity. We're really, you may know that, and you may not, that in terms of the city government, although we have a strong mayor form of government, when it comes to land use planning, the council is the premier land use planning body and really determines planning policy and oversees long-range planning. Administration is more involved in enforcement of zoning, things of that sort when it comes to land use. And of course, we have the Planning Commission, I believe we've got some planning commissioners here tonight. The Planning Commission is a subset of, of the council that advises the council and then also reviews many of the land use plans before they come to the council. So, let's start with the Albuquerque image and brand and who are we? What are we offering and who do we want to attract? And Dean Forbes is going to kick that off.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the City Council. My name is Geraldine Forbes Sais. I am the dean of the School of Architecture and Planning. On behalf of the faculty, the students and the staff of the school, it is my pleasure to welcome you, to welcome the city staff and the Committee of the Whole to the School of Architecture and Planning and to the University of New Mexico. Our purpose in inviting the Committee of the Whole is to open a dialogue between the city leaders and the, and the school as we share an interest in the future of the city of Albuquerque, its growth and the quality of life that we all share. A moment about the school. This school offers three professional programs, architecture, community and regional planning, landscape architecture, and two graduate certificates, one in historic preservation and regionalism, and two that are in the works, urban and regional design, indigenous design and planning. All our degrees focus on the built environment, economic development as it relates to the design and construction industries, and of course, the quality of life we create through planning and designing both locally and globally. The topic that I've been asked to address initially is Albuquerque 2020, its brand and its identity. And in considering that, it occurs to me that we talk a lot about the brand of the city and the brand of a city moving into the future. A brand however, is something that is created by a marketing company that is usually used to represent a city as it grows, or represent a company, a corporation, a school, an individual. An identity is something very different. It is something that grows from a sense of place, a sense of knowing who and what you are, and something that has to be cultivated through time. What is magnificent about this region, this city, this state, is that in fact, it has a strong sense of identity. And I think that what many want to do and yet fear at the same time is to move forward into the future without losing a sense of who we are because clearly Albuquerque has a sense of identity. Deep roots, deep cultures, we feel it every day, we see it in the face, the faces of our citizens, we see it in our architecture, we see it in our river, and yet we know that the future will happen. So how do we move that forward? And so we talk about, in all our courses, we talk about growth, we talk about planning, we talk about economic development, we talk about justice for our citizens, and we talk about justice for the environment. And some think that those are mutually exclusive. I would put forward that in fact, that does not have to be the case, that in fact, we have, all of us, an interest in finding a way of negotiating that future in which we can move forward without losing a sense of who we are. We've seen great cities, there are great cities in this country. I happen to come from Los Angeles, I've seen city grow and I've seen, I've seen what can happen that's done well and I can see what it can happen that is done less well. And I came to Albuquerque because I think it has an incredible future in front of it. And so it is with that, that I'd like to open this dialogue and we'll talk more later about how I hope that we can build a dialogue that will continue into the future between the university and the city leadership so that we can find that right identity and a future that will really seek out the potential of this great city. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Dean. Okay, so now we're going to open this up to public comment and first we have Katja Crawford, the Assistant Professor of Landscape Architecture. And depending on how many people sign up to speak, we may or may not talk about putting time limits for the time being, we're not going to put any time limits on, on the, the public comment, but listen, go ahead.
Thank you. Well, I, when I walked into the room, I was the only person on the list, but I'm pretty sure that just about everyone has an opinion about branding and identity that comes to Albuquerque, so hopefully I won't be the only person talking about this tonight. I just wanted to say that in our School of Design, Albuquerque is pretty much our laboratory. This is, we are deeply committed to this place. Our students and faculty are both committed to Albuquerque and Albuquerque's identity. Unfortunately, people in the rest of the world don't even know where we are or who we are. We've, I think you've all had an experience of when you want to rent a UPS truck and drive from Dallas to Albuquerque and they say, "No, we don't do international." We don't rent international, we don't cross borders. There seems to be a lack of knowing that Albuquerque and that New Mexico are part of the United States. And so I think Geraldine is absolutely right in that the people who live here and are committed and dedicated to this place have a very strong identity. But how we project to the outside world, we feel like sort of perhaps the unruly cousin of Santa Fe or of Taos. And so in our studios, we have, we are constantly looking at Albuquerque as our laboratory. We have, we look at the missing teeth, it's a common phrase that we use. The urban fabric has a lot of holes in it. These are, are not good, necessarily good analogies, no one wants a smile with lots of missing teeth or fabric with holes in it. And so we look at these vacant lots and I think that that is an, an absolute possibility to forge a strong relationship with the city for these ephemeral kind of landscapes, for the university and the city to have a very strong connection in a public way, a very public way where design ideas can be tested in lots that are vacant, that are not planned for anything, where ideas can pop up and to really be known as the outside world as the creative force that we actually are. And creative Albuquerque, I think, is doing a wonderful job in trying to jumpstart that idea that there's a real, a really strong and very specific creative force here in Albuquerque. And thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to, to speak to this from the public or students and staff? I think we can, since, since no one else has signed up presently, we'll, we'll go ahead and, and open this up to, to the council to speak, but if you would like to speak, why don't you just come on down to the microphone right over here on my right and, and, and we'll see you when you show up there and, and interrupt the council discussion in here so we can continue to hear from the public as well. Counselors, anyone, anyone have a comment with regard to this, the image and brand? I really think it's a, it's an interesting thought that, that we should be branding ourselves in some way better than we do. Counselor Gardunio.
Thank you, Counselor. Benton, and thank you all for being here tonight and all of you, it's really great to be here. Whether you know it or not, I represent a district just east of here and a lot of the photographs were from Nob Hill and East Central, so I'm proud of that. The other thing is that I also am very pleased that we're talking about branding slash identity because it's a really important distinction to make. And I absolutely agree that branding is temporal at best, fashionable at worst, and oftentimes it's negative. And it's negative because it's other-directed, someone else has decided that that's who you are. That's something that we have fought very strongly in District Six. Identity on the other hand, is self-directed. It's something that you feel good about yourself, you identify with it, and I think that's what we need to strive for because branding a city is easy. Having people identify with a city is fairly difficult and I think that's our job. Thank you.
Gardunio, anyone else? Counselor O'Malley?
Thank you. It's interesting that we, we did have a discussion about branding a few years ago and as a matter of fact, that was a very big priority of the former, former mayor who was very involved and actually pretty successful in, in getting Albuquerque out there, so to speak. And there were, there was a lot of recognition for various things and I think we were put on a bunch of lists, applied for various awards and that sort of thing. And I think that that did put Albuquerque out there, but I think there was still that one thing that, that people felt was missing, which is that, that brand, not so much the identity because I think all of us feel strongly about that, I do. I like Counselor Sanchez, for example, his family's been here for many generations and I was born here, born in the valley and so I, I have, you know, strong roots here. But I think this was largely a brand to either attract business or to somehow generate more revenue for the city. And that's sort of the balance that, that we have to try to attain because we are, we have limited resources as a city and to be honest, we are looking for ways to generate more revenue in the city and, and usually that leads to of course, ideas for growth and development and to encourage type of growth and development that we think will bring in additional revenue. So that's also I think part, I certainly see that as part of my charge is looking for those opportunities as well. And I, you know, branding of course, you know, depending on how it's undertaken, I think, if we just hire a PR firm to come up with a brand, maybe that's not a good way to approach it, but we've, you know, to be honest, we have attempted this branding idea, just so you know, it's not totally new in the past. We haven't actually come up with anything. I don't think we even came up with a, we were looking for some kind of an icon or, or something like that for, for some time. But I, I'm glad that it was pointed out, the difference between identity and branding. I think that's very important. But as we'll talk later, you know, just sort of the tension between looking at economic growth, promoting growth and instead again, promoting business and promoting from our standpoint, revenues so that we can turn around and pay for things like streets and infrastructure that we need. There's always going to be, I think, that tension. So, I'll, I'll talk a little bit more about that later.
Counselor Harris, and then we'll, we'll, it looks like we have some people lined up with, with comments.
Just a quick comment about branding, that's something that I thought was interesting when the prior mayor came up with a green queue. And what I really didn't like about that personally is that I don't think he really consulted with the community to see if that's who we thought we were. And one issue with branding is that after a particular chief executive does that, we're kind of stuck with it, you can still see those queues all over city vehicles today. But I don't know if that's something we really think of ourselves. The problem, another problem I had with that is I don't know really what it means to people to be a, to be a green queue. So, I, I would like, in terms of, if we go forward with branding, that it really be a public involvement and that we, we kind of try to find a brand that sort of fits, as Counselor Gardunio said, our identity, and I think it could be helpful.
Any other counselors want to jump in before we hear for a few more people that are lined up? And roughly, try to keep your comments to around two minutes max, we'll see how that works. We may have more time available, but we'll use that as a general guideline right now. I don't think we'll time anyone though, Crystal. Go ahead. Yes, sir. And please state your name when, when you start out. My, you know, I've lived in Albuquerque for 36 years, I wasn't born here, but, but I've lived here the better part of my life and seen it change, seen it grow, not always in ways that, that I would have liked to have seen. And I represent the downtown core, just for those of you who don't know. I really see Albuquerque, well, it pretty clearly is the urban center of the state. There, we have, you know, some other urban centers, but it's, we're the, we're the, the big dog, we're the powerhouse potentially at least as the urban center of the, the state. But I think we, as with the rest of New Mexico, we have a unique sense of place here. The city is different from Las Cruces, it's different from Santa Fe. Santa Fe of course has the great things that it has to offer, but, but we are, you know, should be the urban center of the state, the dynamic center of the state. We are clearly, when you look at the figures, we are the, the top economic generator of the state in terms of just generating the state economy. And I think our sense of place really should be brought forward better. And I think, you know, showing that Albuquerque is, we're not Santa Fe, we really are different. And we have a lot of, I guess a funkier character that I think is, that we have available to us to offer, kind of the, the fun part, the Route 66 thing, you know, the Nob Hill and the downtown, the history of the railroad downtown. You know, there's so much in that sense that, that we have. And so when we're talking about what, what are we offering, you know, I think, I guess the question that would come off of that is, is offering to who? I mean, to some extent, we need to, I think, generate more civic pride in our own citizens that we really have a great place. I've always felt that we, I've always felt very proud of Albuquerque, of, of being different from Santa Fe. So, that's some thoughts there. Counselor Sanchez?
Thank you, Counselor Benton. I've lived in Albuquerque my entire life, I grew up here in the city and I've seen many changes. Many, many years ago when I was growing up, downtown was a happening place, they had the chemo theater, they, all the theaters were downtown, we would go downtown to have dinner in, in the evenings, and then things started to shift to the northeast heights and then we had uptown. So downtown started to die and things were, you know, moving east and after uptown started to, to fail, then everything started to move towards the Wind Rock area and uptown. And we, I've seen those many changes and I think it's had a really negative impact in our city. We truly should have focused on the downtown area. I believe that the downtown area is the heart and soul of our city. I represent Albuquerque's west side and the west side of Albuquerque is the fastest growing area in our city. I've always said the west side of Albuquerque is the final frontier for growth and development in this great city. And it's been very difficult because I want to continue to see the urban area and the downtown area grow, yet at the same time, the infrastructure is starting to fail and people want, want to move into newer areas. I got elected in 1995 to the Burnley County Commission and represented the unincorporated areas of the county. And I pushed hard at one time for a design overlay zone on Edith Boulevard and the resistance by the community was unbelievable. I thought I would have a great deal of support for that, but the community came up and said, "We don't want change." And that's, I think, the biggest obstacle that we all face is change. When I sat down for my first Burnley County Commission meeting in 1995, I didn't know anything about land use, I knew nothing about planning, I said, "I'm making a million-dollar decision for a developer and I know nothing about development." I took some real estate classes, I took some land use classes, and I think that really helped in improve my decision-making in making these tough and difficult decisions. But I think we need to work as a community, we need to collaborate with the community in trying to get people involved to try to understand what we, what we're trying to do as policymakers. And I'm very, very pleased to see that the university is on board in wanting to work with Albuquerque and work with Burnley County because it takes a collaborative effort from different organizations, but we, we also need to reach out to the community. One of the issues that just came up recently and Counselor Benton and myself were involved was Route 66 planning for the west side. And we now have a metropolitan redevelopment area west of the river to 98th Street. That has been a blighted area for many, many years. My business is in West Central, we have a tax and accounting practice, my dad started the business back in 1963. And we've not moved, we've stayed there, but we are looking for change in that area. We will be breaking ground for a new fire station, which will be taking place hopefully in the next four to eight weeks because we need a public safety component along that corridor to try to bring businesses back to that area. I mean, we need to get that done. We are also going to be building a brand-new public library on Unser and Central. How I truly believe that we can empower a community is through literacy and through education and to bring these people into these, into this public library, I think will be a, a great sense of community. But again, every area in this community is unique. We've got the uptown area, we've got Nob Hill, we've got the west side, we've got the Northwest Mesa and Cottonwood. But again, I think it's going to take a collaborative effort if we're going to look at some type of branding. But again, I think we need to be careful in protecting the historical values of each one of our neighborhoods.
Thank you, Counselor Lewis.
Thank you, Counselor Benton. And I moved to Albuquerque about, about 15 years ago. I represent the northwest communities of Albuquerque. Counselor Sanchez and I represent the majority of the, really the sprawl, I guess we, you could say we represent the sprawl in the city of Albuquerque. We have great architecture on the northwest side, it's 16, 1700 square foot homes that make up much of the, of the community there. But we, but we do have some, you know, much of the west side that really is a treasure and there are some wonderful communities. And they are, you know, people that, that live in these communities, that are, are starting families, that wanted to move to a, a new community, a place where they can, I, I think with the same kind of sense of where, where people would move and live anywhere else, they really wanted to have a sense of community, they wanted to be close to where their kids would, you know, you know, play and go to school and have parks. Some of the challenges certainly that we, we deal with on the west side and some of it has to do with just geographical, I mean, I think some of the divide in people's minds of the west side and the east side of Albuquerque and downtown. And, and that dividing line of the river, I think, in some people's minds is just simply because they spend a lot of time on the river crossings, going to and from work and time away from their families on those river crossings. But, you know, over the last 15 years, and it didn't take long for me to really come to appreciate the rest of Albuquerque and certainly the many treasures that we have in this, the city, the downtown, isotopes, park and the many other amenities that we have, our Old Town and, and the, the Biopark and so many other great amenities that we have. But we do have some, some great challenges and I wanted to mention, one of the, the joys and challenges, probably one of the greatest challenges that we've had over the last few years in, in my district and then at the same time, I think a testament to communities working together, planning, planning, working together with homeowners and with landowners, was two-sector plans that we passed unanimously by this council and with a lot of community involvement. This, this Volcano Heights area of the northwest community there, that's just above the escarpment, it borders on the Petroglyph National Park and certainly a great treasure that we wanted to preserve and we wanted to make sure that we were guiding development in that area. That would give, as the dean mentioned, justice for citizens and justice for the environments. I think those were some good terms. But, but to move forward without losing who we are, I think those were important values to us at the time. At the same time, about 1,500 different landowners that owned this property. And it took a certain amount of trust from those landowners and trust from our planning department at City Hall. It took a lot of conversations, a lot of work, a lot of coming back to the drawing board. And I think our planning department, I think, you know, really came a long way in understanding that, that they could trust these landowners and certainly the landowners in the same way that the planning department too. But I really believe that we, we were able to guide development in a real treasure of, of new homes that'll be in, in new communities and new, you know, centers for community and that is above the escarpment there that I think are going to be just, just a great, I think are going to add to. I think about how this may be sprawl right now, but there was a time when just about every part of the city of Albuquerque was, was sprawl and all the districts that are represented here, other than maybe Counselor Benton. I guess there was a time when your, when your district too also was, was new growth in the city of Albuquerque. So, we have a lot of challenges, I think, over the last year and certainly interested in some of your thoughts and maybe you watched the development of the Volcano Heights sector plan and certainly interested in your thoughts and your ideas and maybe some things we did right, maybe some things that we could have done better and could, and could do better the next time.
Counselor Gardunio.
Thank you, Counselor Benton. If your question goes to, and I don't know where the gentleman went, but, okay, if your question goes to, "What are we going to do as a governmental entity going forward to help identity?", that's a really tough question. I think some of the attempts of our answering that have already moved forward. But I think I want to throw something into this formula of identity and that is, growth is not inevitable. And I think we talk about it as if it's going to happen and there's nothing we can do about it and we'll just have to sort of... about it, and we'll just have to sort of deal with it. Well, I think it's better to deal with it on the front end. One of the things we need to do is start tying use of water, water availability with land use. And we don't do that. And I think it's a real detriment. I know there's a gentleman that talked about Sierra County and some, I don't know, some study or some work that's being done around watersheds. And that's something that we haven't looked at. In fact, much to a lot of folks' dislike of my bringing this up a lot of the times, we have invaded another watershed, and we shouldn't do that. And we think we can do it again somewhere else. We're talking about St. Augustine and taking the water from there. I mean, that is just crazy talk. A lot of folks have found that out in other countries. We ought to learn from that. And if we think that we can grow ad infinitum, that we can grow just as large as we can, the only reason that Los Angeles, and apologies to folks from Los Angeles, the only reason they grew, as large as they grew, was Old Holland and all of the water that was stolen from the Colorado River. That is coming up. In one of these days, we're going to find out that there's no more water for Los Angeles, and you can't manufacture water. You cannot make water. Yes, sir?
Can I follow up with a question?
In fact, that came up at the Water Conference this last weekend, and I can't believe that we don't. I'm looking into it right now. And why we don't have that, I don't know. One of the reasons that was given is because we don't have the enforcement ability. And that's crazy. That's like saying we can't stop everybody from running stop signs, so let's get rid of them. That's not going to help. And I think we need to start looking at these issues really critically. And I know I'm not the most popular guy in town when it comes to water, because I do bring up issues that I think we all need to be, you know, real serious about. Thank you.
Councilor Gargenio, because I think it's a really important point, and it kind of ties into the branding, I guess, that I would envision for the city would be as a very sustainable southwestern, you know, arid city. We're... We are in competition with some really cool places, and I, when we're saying, "What are we offering and who are we trying to attract?", and there's two things that we're trying to attract. One would be progressive, forward-looking businesses from outside that are looking for an educated workforce and that are looking for, when they do bring their own people here, which does contribute to the growth of the population, that when they bring their own folks here, these forward-looking businesses really are looking for a sense of place, a unique place to move. They're not just looking for another, another city that might look like where they may have come from. They're looking for a unique place, they're looking for a good urban environment. A lot of the younger people who are involved in these companies really are looking for a very vibrant urban character. And I think what Albuquerque really has with that potential to be a sustainable desert city is a great sense of place. And we have a terrific open space, as Councilor Lewis was talking about. We've got the Petroglyphs, we've got the river and the Rio Grande State Park, we've got the foothills and the mountains. We have so much to offer in terms of that, you know, kind of cool outdoor lifestyle that a lot of younger people are looking for. I think the other thing, obviously, that these companies are looking for is an educated workforce. And that's why we're here, of course, that we want to support UNM, we want to support continuing improvement in our public schools, is a huge issue as far as what we're offering the rest of the world. But also, I was just in a symposium, and Moises Gonzalez from your school was also there yesterday in Denver. It was called the Rocky Mountain West Urban Leadership Symposium. Really interesting group of people were kind of promoting the urban areas of the west, of the Mountain West. And these issues were all being discussed, so it was really timely that we had already arranged this meeting before I even knew I was going to be going to this symposium. But very interesting discussions about attracting those larger national businesses to help grow our economy. But also, very important, is having a strong small business, local small business atmosphere for growing local entrepreneurship. So, you know, they're the two, you're not going to hit the home run with just the one, you've really got to have both. And I think the, what I kept hearing at that symposium was, you've got to have a great sense of place, and you've got to, you're really, people are looking for a vibrant urban center. And we are that for New Mexico. And I would say that downtown is that for Albuquerque, and we need to regrow downtown as well. Any other thoughts, councilors? Councilor Malley?
I just wanted to briefly talk about, the question too was about planning for the city and our role in planning for the city as a whole. And of course, we do have some comprehensive plans, and we have something called a Plan Growth Strategy, which has, you know, its problems. But anytime we've attempted to, I would say, even, I think, encourage or somehow control or manage, I should say manage, growth, there's always some setbacks. And typically, there's a really big pushback from the development industry and construction industry. And a good example of that is when we did finally get through a growth strategy for the city, we lost our utility. We lost our water utility. There was a lot of pressure on the state level to take it away from the city of Albuquerque, and now it basically belongs wholesale to another agency, political agency, which is called the Water Authority. So, the city council, or the city of Albuquerque, you know, lost a huge asset, and it lost control over that asset. It also lost the ability to, what's the word, in terms of the county?
Extraterritorial.
Yeah, extraterritorial zoning, which is huge as well. So, that's what I mean about sort of the tensions that exist, right? We know that we're not going to have water forever. Anytime though anybody tries to impose something more restrictive regulations on water use, there, believe me, there's going to be pushback, and typically, those, you know, we're outnumbered if folks who want to pursue that. And I've always said, you know, it's terrible, but I think the only way we're going to do something on water is if it doesn't come out of the tap. That's when we're going to do something about water. Or when it gets to the point where it's not, we're not able to drink it or something like that. And then, of course, that'll be a big, huge emergency, and then maybe we'll do something about it. But in the meantime, we're, we continue to, I think, plan. I mean, I, it's so difficult, I think, to plan for the city as a whole because we have very different districts. Some councilors mentioned here, they're largely residential areas that they represent, huge growth areas which have huge residential populations. You know, I represent an area that has some downtown in it, all the museums. I have a very different district, it's semi-urban. There's also, of course, all the Asecas, a part of the North Valley, so it has its particular needs. So, I look at planning, and there's a lot of planning that's going on in my district, so that, you know, we can influence or deal with the future of those smaller areas. So I think that's what's really going on in the city, is a lot of the smaller, the smaller sector plans, the neighborhood plans, the councilors that are involved in that. But I think that's the issue, is that there's going to be this tension, it exists. And it's very, a strong political situation, and so, you know, I understand Councilor Gargenio's frustration, and actually people's frustration about the water issue. But I'll be honest, I don't see any, anything coming forward very soon to deal with it.
Should we move on to, well, see, did anyone, did you want to speak to the issue from a public standpoint? Please, go ahead. That is a really good point. And I've been on the council for 12 years. And during all those 12 years, we've really tried to push the downtown corridor to make it the center, and it's been very difficult. There's been some gains. They've been doing it for years and years and years, and you take three steps forward and you take two steps back. But I represent the far northeast heights, as far north as you can get, up by Pasal del Norte area, and Montgomery, San Mateo, and then all the way up. And a lot of times, it's really difficult to have, the folks that I represent, they won't come downtown. First, there's not much downtown that would attract them. You know, the younger people, there's bars down there, there's some arts places, but you're absolutely right. And I think that that's probably why we've had such a hard time to really get downtown back. I was born and raised right off Gerard on San Rafael between Gerard and Yale, and I don't know if some of you are as old as me, but you can remember when it was vibrant, Fedway downtown. That was the place to go. You got to park on top of the roof, and you went into Fedway, and it was a department store. It was really cool. And it's just not like that anymore. And so I remember when we were determining, when the mayor, the former mayor, was trying to put the new baseball stadium downtown, we worked really, really hard to get that done. It didn't happen. There's a lot of issues both ways, and then it was put back to the Duke Stadium, which is now the Isotopes Park. So, you make some very good points, and it doesn't matter how much maybe the council wants to do it, but it's, it might be difficult to make downtown the center core again. I'd like to respond to that since I did sort of instigate it. I would, I really agree with you, and I think you're making some great points with regard to that. I think, you know, we have a policy in the city of Albuquerque called the Centers and Quarters, so it includes centers throughout the city. And it isn't only about downtown. We want a vibrant uptown. We want a vibrant new urban center in Councilor Lewis's district, which is what he was referring to with the Volcano Heights plan. I guess, you know, I would say, and I think you can speak to cities throughout the country, and it, you'll, it will be confirmed that no city, modern, successful city is successful without a successful downtown. So that would be my only point about that. It's not a zero-sum game. It's not about downtown against Pasal del Norte, or against Volcano Heights, or against Nob Hill. It's not a zero-sum game, but you must have a vibrant urban center. And the only other thing I wanted to say about these, the idea of centers and corridors is, I think this new, this generation of people that we're trying to keep here, by the way, you know, a lot of what we do here at UNM is educate people very well, and then we lose them. You know? We do the expensive part, and then they're gone, all right? Because we don't, we're not developing our sense of place. But I think, you know, that generation of new, forward-thinking entrepreneurial people want something called walkable urbanism. You know, they want the ability, if they are in the new Volcano Heights downtown area, if you want to call it that, the sub-downtown of Volcano Heights, they want to be able to walk. They want to be able to hang out in an urban environment, you know, see people and be seen and kind of have fun. And I think that's a quality that's not just restricted to downtown, but I think we really need to have it downtown as well.
Let me address, and I completely agree with you, but what we've found through the years is it's not something that's easy to do. And, you know, if you put a time limit, what, how long is it going to take to have that vibrant downtown? You know, they've been trying for a long, long time, and so it's just not easy. It's difficult, and I don't know if that has anything to do with branding, I don't know.
It's, you know, three steps forward, two back. That's the way downtown has been. I remember 15 years ago, honestly, in my opinion, I think it was in a little better shape than it is today.
Right. But it can be done, because if you look at Nob Hill, I was, I grew up in Nob Hill, and remember when it was, and then it failed, and look at it now, so it is on that verge too.
And I think Nob Hill, I think you'd probably agree, Councilor Gargenio, that really didn't come about because of some grand plan that we created. It just kind of started to coalesce, and people made some investments, and it took off. Thanks. Should we move on to the next topic? Everybody okay with that? Or anybody want to speak any further to the branding and what we're trying, the people who we're trying to attract? Just to be...
I just have one more question.
Thank you. Good points. Let's move on to the next category of discussion, growth and development. How can land use, resource management, transportation, housing, business development, and policy support our brand and expand our goals? And I really like what the last speaker said, that, you know, we have such unique neighborhoods, and we have such a unique culture, and that's part of what I think our offering should be. Yes. So to kick it off, we're going to have a presentation by Dr. Claudia Isaac, Associate Professor of Community and Regional Planning.
Chair Benton, members of the council, thank you very much for coming to join us here at the School of Architecture and Planning. I'm an Associate Professor of Community and Regional Planning, and I'd like to talk today about growth and economic development in perhaps a more general sense than the other comments that have really played into what we've been talking about here today. I also want to thank you for engaging with the public on these critical issues, and I think is a fundamental ground for creating an economic development process that is going to be effective, is going to be essential for making sure that we're talking about identity and not about a frivolous kind of brand. Economic development is the outcome of policies that enhance the quality of life and standard of living for cities' populations. That seems obvious, but I think it's really important to emphasize that's what economic development is about. Successful economic development alleviates poverty, increases access to goods and services, and ensures that stable and high-wage jobs are available to the widest possible population. As Councilor Gargenio noted, the terms growth and development are often taken to mean the same thing, but I subscribe to the view that challenges that conflation, reminding us that economic growth is only an indicator of development, and it's not the only available indicator of that. When we want to know what's happening in a local economy, we usually look at the gross municipal product, the number and size of monetary transactions occurring within the city's borders over a fixed period of time. Growth in GMP can certainly bring about development, but fiscal growth is only effective to the extent that it does not undermine other critical capital flows. In some cases, the counterintuitive reality is that growth can be an indicator of reduced quality of life, lowered standard of living, and so can represent a failure of development. Some of these other capital flows are familiar to all of us and have been mentioned already in today's conversation. Human capital, the skills, training, health, creative capacity, ability to flourish of city residents. Natural capital, which in a vital community enhances sustainability, cleanliness, and efficient use of local resources. And of course, Albuquerque's physical capital, its built environment, which in a vital economy closes gaps between provision and demand for infrastructure, housing, commercial and manufacturing space, and transit. Social capital is the last flow of capital that I want to talk about, and it's one that's often ignored in economic analysis. I think it's one of the most important capital flows in the development process, particularly if we want to preserve and enhance our sense of identity in place. Social capital is characterized by the networks and relationships that bond communities together eternally and bridge communities to each other, another topic that's come up in the conversation already. It's grounded in community traditions that govern rules of reciprocity, hospitality, trust, and community responsibility. These norms enable community members to develop and nurture non-cash resources to survive and even flourish in the face of scarcity. A community with robust social capital has high... A community with robust social capital has high levels of civic engagement with broad-based and participatory, community-based organizations that collaborate and engage effectively with government and the private sector. Municipal practices can enhance social capital, including participatory planning, asset-based development, community-based design and planning, and especially an innovative tool called participatory budgeting. Participatory budgeting was developed in the 1980s in Brazil to respond to massive capital improvement needs and severely constrained municipal budgets. It has become a popular management tool in cities across the globe, including the United States, facing similar constraints. The Participatory Budgeting Project describes this tool as a democratic process in which community members directly decide how to spend a part of their, of the budget, the public budget. Participatory budgeting utilizes community social capital to develop fiscal investment plans that respond directly to community priorities. Participatory budgeting can increase community acceptance of municipal investment decisions. It can ease implementation by reducing conflict. And most important, participatory budgeting reduces spending inefficiencies by improving the quality of information used to create a municipal budget, making it more feasible to access the human, natural, physical, and social capital implications of more easily-measured fiscal investments. Robust social capital facilitates information sharing, providing community expertise about often invisible aspects of a local economy. Albuquerque offers some encouraging opportunities for community members to participate in its budgeting process. Council district set-asides provide an opportunity for city councillors to respond directly to their constituents, helping to ensure that CIP investments align with community priorities. In addition, sector and metropolitan redevelopment area planning processes, particularly when they are fully participatory, provide community members with the opportunity to articulate capital investment priorities and, as those plans are adopted by council, to ensure that there are policy guidance, there's policy guidance for future investment decisions. So I encourage the members of the council to consider building on these existing participatory practices. That, I think, will increase the likelihood that Albuquerque's fiscal investments develop all five forms of capital. I look forward to hearing your thoughts about how Albuquerque could enhance community members' inclusion as informants and participants in these processes. And as a citizen and professor, I look forward to participating in those debates as well. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. First to speak under our public comment is Mark Childs.
One should never go after Claudia. But I'll, I'm going to try to make it a shorter and simpler point. Can you hear me without the mic?
You have to be on the mic.
I have to be on the mic. Council members, I would like to suggest to you that good design, sustainable, cool, good design, is strong and enduring economic development. It is also critical to the quality of life and a sense of pride in one's city. This is deeply true for the public parts of the city, the streets, public buildings, parks, and even the power substations and cell towers. And you are the pride clients for those critical parts. You set the standards for the public realm. Most of us have traveled to great cities and towns for vacations. This, as you know, is a major worldwide industry, travel to vibrant communities, but that's the smallest and least important part of this. There is growing evidence that creative individuals and businesses move to vibrant places, and even more important, that vibrant places are the crucible for creative work for the people who are already there. If you look closely at great cities and towns, you see that they are each fundamentally themselves. San Francisco is not Barcelona, and Oxford is a vitally different place than Telluride. However, they share some principles. First, they may learn from, but in their true essence, do not copy other places. You can't go to Oklahoma City, or San Francisco, or Barcelona, and just simply steal ideas. We have to make them our own. Second, great places celebrate multiple different eras of historic buildings and are actively involved in, engage in creating new risks, new styles that are rooted in their place. They don't copy, but rather learn and reinvent themselves. Third, they have rich, robust, pedestrian elements, great streets, plazas, and parks. The walking neighborhoods, the walking downtown is critical to that incredibly vibrant place that are, is a great city. Council members, I believe it is our opportunity, the citizens' opportunity, and your responsibility to invest in building a great Albuquerque. Thank you.
Why don't we hear from the council, and then again, if somebody would like to speak to this topic, come on forward and, and approach the mic, and we'll, we'll look for you up there. I really, I really like the idea of participatory investment decision-making. I, I think that, that Professor Isaac really hit that on the head. And then I really also like what, what Mark Childs just said about, and this is another thing I heard at this symposium in Denver, where people were talking about how new ideas, part of the reason we come together in cities and in urban areas is to be near other people and to riff off of each other's ideas. I mean, that's how, that's, that's really a primary reason why we live in urban areas, is to interact with other people and to develop our ideas through that human interaction. And so I think that those are some really important points. Any other thoughts? Council Gardino.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Professor Isaac. It brings, I think, a lot of what we'd like to pretend doesn't exist out there to the front and to the discussion that I think needs to be critical if we're going to move forward as a city. I know what, earlier I said that growth is not inevitable. If there is going to be growth and planned growth, it's going to have to be within, and I believe you also alluded to that, sir. But I'm not only concerned with growth from outside, I'm concerned about growth that's quality growth for all of us already here. And if we don't look at that, and we think that the only growth that is meaningful is to bring in the next, and I hate to use any company, but the next corporation who's going to bring us 300 jobs and tremendous stress on our infrastructure, that is not healthy growth. However, and I think, I wanted to just allude to Paulo Friday in Pedagogy of the Oppressed talks about the society not taking charge and not knowing that all of us are in it together. It is very easy to blame poor communities or subsets of those communities as if it was their fault. No one prefers to be poor, no one prefers to be oppressed, and no one likes being at the bottom of the heap. But I think that'll continue happening if we don't look at who we are, how we're going to interact, and how social capital is so important, and how important it is to have growth happen with everyone on board. Because we'll never grow healthily if we continually growth only, or grow only the 1%. After all, there is 99% of us who don't get a chance to participate, and I think it's really important for us to look at that. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Counselor Sanchez.
Thank you, Council Benton. Professor Isaac talked about the set-aside for each council district. Every two years, each council district gets $1 million. That sounds like a lot of money, but it's $500,000 a year when the needs in each district are tremendous. And if we're going to invest in growth and invest in our community, it takes dollars. This next budget cycle, when you go back to the ballot in 2013, the geo-bond in 2011 was for 164 million dollars. We are looking during this next budget cycle to go out and bond for only 110 million dollars. That's a huge decrease for the needs in this community. So we need to find ways, creative ways, of trying to bring that money up. What we did the last time is, in the past, we bonded for 10 years to pay back the debt on our geo-bonds. We've now extended that to 13 years. We may even want to look at extending that to 15 years so we can continue to invest in our community, because if we don't do that, you know, if we only bond for 110 million dollars for the next two years for the size of Albuquerque, we are going to have some problems on how we're going to grow and the things that we want to do for our community. But it takes money to get these things done. And if the taxpayers of this community, if we take this to the voters and ask them to increase the GRT, the Gross receipts Tax, you know, we've got to get some support for the community. Oklahoma City did it, and they've got the Riverwalk and other amenities, but we've got to take the challenge and the risk to put it on the ballot to tell the voters, do you want Albuquerque to grow? Do you want this for our city? It's going to take dollars, and if we don't ask the community to support it, it will never happen.
Counselors, any other thoughts? We have someone ready to speak. Go ahead, sir.
The North Valley Overlay Zone has sort of stalled for, for a little bit, but we plan to introduce it, and I know there was a lot of folks who worked on that. And it's an overlay zone that really encourages cluster development, and there should be a draft that's available probably through my office if you want to see it. And it also encourages as much as possible permeable surfaces. So rather than a, what was called Euclidean zoning, which is a real problem, we continue to try to push sort of the suburban zoning and regulations on these smaller communities like the Valley and Duranis being an example. This allows for the cluster development to take place, that is, instead of having what is called these flagpole developments, or huge houses on small lots, mostly, they seem to be of Tuscan design, I sort of called, you know, Tuscan design on steroids is what they look like in the Valley. So what we, what we really try to do is, and there's some design regulations, so again, to conserve water, to put it back into the aquifer as much as possible, to get away from these hard surfaces, to do more cluster development, which was sort of the organic way that the Valley started to develop. That's the overlay zone for the North Valley, and that's something that's going to be coming up. And do you have any more? Do you have any other things to say about?
Thank you. So you can contact Counselor O'Malley's office to get more details. Anyone else on the previous topic? Just, our last topic, I think, is really important, and I think some people came just to hear that, and that's the town gown relationships, that UNM and the city, how can we work better together? We do all sorts of great things, like, like the Design and Planning Assistance Center, which I attended, I was a Vista volunteer when I first came to Albuquerque. We do a lot of good things like that, but then we've also had some conflicts between the city and UNM. And again, at this symposium, we heard a lot from universities and cities that are really reinforcing one another, universities that are reinforcing the urban quality of the city, and cities who are really supporting what I was talking about, which is that, of not losing the mind power that, that's represented in this institution. So we have a presentation by Alf Simon and Michael Pride.
Good evening, and I'll just thank everybody now for showing up, both down on the dais or our replacement for one, and in the audience, and having patience and interest. I think that this is a great indicator of the interest of the members of this academic community to develop very strong relationships with the city and that they care for the city. This last topic is on town gown relationships, and we're doing a kind of a tag team that will include the dean, as a matter of fact. And we'll start with the question of why town gown relationships to begin with, and there are the obvious ones. As a land-grant institution and an urban institution, we have some kind of inherent requirement. It's the flagship, state flagship. Thank you, sir. I knew here, I get to use that word, for a little while longer. We have, we have an explicit responsibility to serve the people of the state, and as an urban university, we just have a kind of implied responsibility to serve the people of Albuquerque. Furthermore, the vast majority of students and employees of UNM are also residents of the city. Our fortunes are inextricably tied. We too depend on the city's infrastructure, schools, natural resources, and cultural amenities. As students and practitioners engage directly in the environment, both natural and human-made, the faculty and students of the School of Architecture and Planning are particularly interested in the city. More often than not, Albuquerque serves as a laboratory for this school, and you've heard comments about that earlier this evening. We observe the city, we learn from it, and we test ideas for it, at least on paper. Collaboration between the school and the city can help enrich the lessons learned and strengthen the knowledge and skills we develop here at the school and take with us to practice many of us in this city, as well as elsewhere. Together, we can develop strategies that balance growth, economic development, and the needs of the less fortunate with designs and planning that incorporate best practices, including national ones, with local identity and broad inclusion. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Alf Simon.
Thank you. Thank you, and I will reiterate my thanks to the council members for coming and visiting today, and to all of you for, for coming and joining in this very important discussion. I'm just going to spend a couple of minutes following upon this notion of town gown, particularly relating to our school, some of the, what I think would be mutual interest, some of the things that we do research on, we study, and we teach every day, and we try to keep as current as we can on what's happening, not only here, but in the rest of the world, so that we can bring back, I think, the knowledge and the skills that are necessary to help our community. I just want to go through a few things. Number one, and we've talked, and this is going to refer back to what we've been talking about all evening, smart urban growth, I mean, is, I think is critical. It involves policies that seek to combat the urban sprawl, to make urban areas more compact. The consensus is that growth areas have protected great amounts of both wild areas and farmland throughout the country. Secondly, infrastructure. This is, I think, something that's important to all of us. We, we, we like to not think about infrastructure. Infra means below in Latin. It's out of sight, out of mind, and yet it's so critical to how we live our lives and to the quality of our lives. We, we want to know that that infrastructure's there to serve us. The, the infrastructure that facilitates a place or a region's progress towards the goal of sustainable living is, is our goal as well. We know that our infrastructure that's now in place is aging, much of it is falling apart. As we replace it, we also know that we've learned a lot since that infrastructure was, was put in. We've learned a lot about how we can do it differently, and we would like to be involved in that process. Thirdly, building strong communities. Strong communities are communities that have good housing, are well-fed, are healthy, are close to public transportation, have activities for youth, have food security, and have parks and open spaces. I think we, we've talked about this throughout the evening, but this is not only what makes a healthy city. A healthy city is comprised of a bunch of... A healthy city is comprised of a bunch of healthy communities. The next urban public space, a city's park, square, streets, and other shared spaces are symbols of collective well-being and possibility. They're expressions of achievement and the formation of civic culture. Public spaces are a catalyst for building healthy, sustainable, and economically viable cities. They're the engines of successful city growth. Regional identity. Regions are historically continuous. Regional identity integrates the material phenomena, that is, the built environment and the aspects of the built environment of the region, with the ideas, the values, the rituals, and the beliefs of the regional community. Again, a strong regional identity equals strong economic vitality and growth. And finally, public health, safety, and economic development through good design is ultimately what we have to offer. And I'm now going to turn it back over to Michael.
Turn it over to Geraldine.
Or turn it over directly to Geraldine. Okay.
So there may be final comments from the, the audience or certainly from the council, and I want to thank you so very much for taking the time to share your thoughts with us and listen to us this evening. I'm really very touched and grateful that our conversation that Ike and I had over a cup of coffee was able to make this happen. Great cities and great universities should be in dialogue with one another. We should be collaborating to create, you know, an even finer place for citizens. So in that spirit, after considering that indeed this should be a beginning, not an end, I'd like to offer that we, as a School of Architecture and Planning, would like to invest in the city. As you've heard, we use the city as a laboratory all the time, but formalize that investment by committing that every year, we would like to work with the city council, work with the city leadership, to create the Albuquerque City Lab, that would be a project, that would be an interdisciplinary project from the school, in which we would work with the city leadership to identify an area that we can use as a research and creative focus for the semester, in which, in which we can all learn how the city works, how we work, and the students can also benefit from this. And so, as a final thought, I hope that you will accept this as a token of our appreciation for your time here. Also, perhaps take this back to the mayor and the city staff, and please communicate to them how sincere I am when I say I believe that we can be a great city, we are a great city, and we can become a greater city. So thank you so very much.
Thank you very much. And I really appreciate you being here. I am a city councilor and I work for a different government agency, and we deal with government agencies all the time. And I'm telling you, it hasn't been really good in the last 12 years that I've done it. I can remember in the past, we would, we would always, we'd have a meeting, we haven't done it a long time, but we'd have city councillors, county commissioners, Albuquerque Public Schools board members, and we'd have these joint meetings. And we always tried to get the board of regents to attend. Well, guess what? They never would. And it was kind of, there was always like a strained relationship, I know, between the city and UNM and even the other government agency that I worked with. But what I find out is, we don't work well together. It's almost a protection of turf. I was on the phone today with someone who works for UNM, we were talking about an MOU, and it's like, we're both trying to protect the best interests of our entity that we're not really willing to open up and work together to provide services and help each other. And I'm telling you, so I appreciate this because I think this is a first step. I think that we ought to try to meet with the board of regents sometime, too, and see if we can all get on the same page, because you're absolutely right. If we're going to make the city go forward, all these government agencies need to work together where we can share resources, because we don't have the resources we used to. And I think that's what it's going to take. So I really appreciate being here, and thank you very much for inviting us.
Counselor O'Malley? I want to close my mouth, but I'm also very pleased to be here. D-PAC still exists, by the way? Okay, that's good to know. But, because I have some ideas, and I'd like to talk to somebody about that at some point. And because the university, D-PAC has been really supportive of the work that I've done in the past, not just currently, but work that I've done, for example, in the sawmill, D-PAC was very involved in some of the early planning efforts. And that's, that's a huge resource, by the way. I guess what's kind of frustrating to me sometimes is the departments don't talk to each other. I mean, it makes sense, of course, I think, for us to have a real strong relationship with the department, the architecture department. But I've just run into some, fortunately, we've come to some good, I think, resolutions, but, you know, it's been tough sometimes working with the university. And in particular, we've got the issue on 4th Street that we finally resolved, having a clinic that was moving there. And the state being what it is, there was some pushback as to whether or not they should comply with the North 4th Street Plan, which is pretty progressive, and it's a really great plan. And we had to negotiate that. Something I thought that the university would understand right away and, and help make that happen, but it wasn't that easy. So I think we still have a long way to go in that area. Not, you know, not so much with this department, I would say, but certainly with the university as a whole, you know, making those connections. Anyway, thank you very much for inviting us and for, you know, all of you. I really appreciate your questions and your comments.
Counselor Gardino.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. And counselors, thank you for coming along also, but I really want to thank the university and the architecture department and planning, the architecture and planning department. I think this is a nascent but important place to be right now. I happen to live on campus, so you might understand what kind of issues I have, especially when I have a five-story-high dormitory being built in my front yard. And some of these things happen, I know because the university believes that it's the best thing that can happen for them, but they have a tendency to forget and involve the community. It wasn't until the Nob Hill and North Campus communities came together and said, "Look, you're going to listen to us." They were ready to just put it up, take it or leave it. So at least there's been some discussion. Hopefully, this, as I say, will be the beginning. But there are a lot of more departments who still don't know that the city exists. And it's foreign to me to think that two entities, the university and the city, occupy the same space and don't realize that each other exists. That's got to change, and it's got to change fairly quickly, because we're running out of ability to work outside of each other, and we're going to have to start working together. We're having the same problem with Expo New Mexico. Both happen to be in the proximity of my district, so I guess I'm just lucky that way. But again, thank you very much for all this.
Counsel Harris?
I think, I'm sensing that we have like a 7 o'clock deadline that we're past. I just want to say thank you, everybody, for participating.
And I see a couple of people that would like to still speak, so why don't we go ahead and hear from you? And try to be brief. I'm sorry, sorry. I think we've had such a great outpouring of people wanting to speak, and we haven't really had enough time. Please. Well, you know, some great ideas here tonight. I want to thank everybody for sticking it out. I know probably some of us would like to go on for another couple hours, but it's probably not possible. But, but I wanted to end on a really positive note. You know, we talked about some of the conflict that we've had between the university and the city, and we started out with a big old argument about a big old parking garage. And that has really, and I see Mary Kenny here in the audience, that has really turned into, we've really made something great out of that negative start. We now, with the cooperation of the university and the city and the county and the council of governments, have an $850,000 roughly grant to look at transportation as it affects this entire nucleus of UNM and CNM, which is the most number of vehicle, cars per day of any major activity center in the city. 75,000 cars a day come to this immediate area. It's a real challenge, it's a real impact, it's an impact on the neighborhoods. And we came together and got these two excellent federal grants, and we're going to be looking at how people come and go from this area. And so that might be something the, the school would like to get involved in, and people as individuals. And I'd just like to say that, that I really appreciated the ideas I heard here tonight. And you can come on down to the city council and speak during public comment. I encourage you to do that. I think, you know, it really, getting the kind of ideas that we heard tonight out there again and again, and to continue a dialogue about so many positive thoughts here tonight. Love the city lab idea. Geraldine, thanks for that, and want to work with you on that. But participate in your city government. I know it's a tough slog sometimes, and we do the two steps back on occasion, but I think we can keep the three steps forward moving and maybe get it up to four or five forward for every two steps back in the future. Counselor Gardino?
I just wanted to really thank you, Counselor Benton, for not only presenting this but championing what we need to do here, because a lot of times we all, someone said, exist in our own silos and see the city only as our own little part, but I think you've taken it beyond that, and thank you very much for that.
Thank you. Thanks, everybody. Thanks for being here tonight. Meetings adjourned.